All right. All right, can I have the roll call, please?
Gibson? Kepler? Here. Cocharney?
Here.
Armsby? Satterfield? Stoltenberg?
Here.
Wenland?
Here. All right, we had minutes from the meeting of April 17th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I approve a move for approval of the minutes from April 17th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the meeting of April 17th, 2024. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay, thank you. The minutes are approved. All right, good evening and welcome to the Plan and Zone Commission for May 15th, 2024. We are a recommending body appointed by the mayor and city council to look at site plans, zoning requests, land use and such. We see a few folks in the audience tonight, so at the appropriate time, I will recognize the audience and ask if you have any comments to provide them at the podium at my left and your right back there. We would love to hear from you. And with that, Greg, or sorry, Taylor, we will begin.
Thank you, Chairman. First three cases on our agenda tonight are public hearings related to adoptions of either plans or ordinance changes. So I'll briefly present on those. Case 2423, 2424, and 2434, that's, these are ordinances adopting the updated comprehensive plan, adopting the updated downtown master plan, and also a zoning ordinance amendment relating to our zoning compatibility table, which is required to be updated because of our update of the conference plan. So we'll start with the comprehensive plan. We've held many work sessions. We've initiated, we've had numerous presentations, engaged in multiple work sessions, convened with multiple groups, school groups, et cetera, and hosted an open house last November to solicit comments and feedback on Bettner's vision for 2045, the planning horizon for this comp plan update. As a result of these efforts, the staff is ready to recommend adoption of this plan. We do have a copy online for viewing. A big part of that update, I'll remind you, is this update, the future land use map for you. There are updates to text and demographics, some of the recommended actions to achieve the overreaching goals of the comp plan. This is a big part of it. Staff has worked very hard, worked on it since the end of 2022, and now we are in May of 2024 to begin that adoption process. So that's the first ordinance, adoption of the conference plan. The second is our downtown master plan. Shive Hattery and City Bettner staff completed updates to the downtown master plan mid 2023. The plan is now just being recommended for official adoption for the purposes of alignment with the comprehensive plan. Copy is also online for viewing. That main, this is really the main page that aligns that future land use map, which is located in the comprehensive plan, but the same future land use map is shown in the downtown master plan. So both of these plans are, you know, envision the whole city in this and then the downtown master plan, the whole downtown area. And of course, we have our downtown overlay district, which is shown in blue, and we have a downtown Smith district area, which is shown in yellow. But this alignment is a very big improvement of what we had before. So this is being brought before you. Staff has recommended adoption of it as well. And lastly, the updating of the zoning compatibility table. This table is located in the preamble of our zoning code. This is really what staff and the commission would look, as one part of a, under request for rezoning, would look forward to see if the future land use map, what the requested zoning district for that rezoning is compatible on that future land use map. Currently, the, as mentioned in many previous meetings, but I will just readdress it, we changed the names of our land use designations. So for instance, urban low intensity is now neighborhood light. Urban median intensity is now mixed transitional, et cetera. There was also the addition of conservation subdivision, and really service commercial is that mid, is a new like middle commercial. We already had neighborhood commercial, which will still be the same. It only, it recommends only a lot of very light commercials, which is C1 zoning right now. But you can see the walkover of the names as shown before you. And then the actual compatibility table as shown. So when looking, we have that eight-part test under a rezoning. This is one of the first parts. I think it's number two, or number one. Is the zoning district compatible or consistent with the comprehensive plan, future land use map? And this is what, a way to look at that. We still have our DCAs. Those are shown, so developed. So that is an option, like a form-based district. But the Euclidian districts are shown in the right column. And those are primarily almost the same as shown in our current code. We had to update with the new conservation subdivision, service commercial, and then add Euclidian districts for that. But this will allow us to continue to consider rezoning requests under our new comprehensive plan while we are working on updating our zoning ordinance. So at such time, we might, once undergoing that process, we might reorganize this at, just suggesting adding or subtracting different zoning districts. But, and at that time, we can readopt a new table that reflects those changes. But this is just an amendment, which allows us to continue growing, continue requests for development. And it's also in alignment with the new comprehensive plan before. Even that, staff recommends, these are ordinances, so we have to hold public hearings for each, but recommends public hearings and votes of recommendation from the Plan Zoning Commission to City Council to adopt the filing, Premier Bettner of Conference of Plan Update for 2045. That's case 2423. Downtown Master Plan Update, case 2424. And the zoning ordinance amendment, updated zoning compatibility table, case number 2434. I can take any questions.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Any questions at this point? I'll just make a comment. I know you and the rest of the staff had done an extraordinary amount of work getting us to this stage, and we appreciate all that work and effort. We've participated in a little bit of it, but you guys have really been carrying the load and much appreciated to all of you, so, good job. Yeah. All right, if there's no comment there now, I would ask, is there proof of publication for case 24-023, the updated comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Okay, then I will open the hearing for case 24-023 and offer the audience any opportunity to comment on this case. Okay, no comment from the audience. I will close the public hearing. Any discussion or comments from commission? No? All right, then we will go to roll call for...
Motion.
Oh, sorry, motion. I need a motion for my roll call. Yes, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve case number 24-023, the adoption of the ordinance for the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve case 24-023, subject to the staff recommendations. Roll call on the motion, please.
Kepler?
Yes.
Cocharney?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wenland?
Yes. Okay. Recommended for approval. All right, do we have proof of publication, Lisa, for case 24-024, updated downtown master plan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I will open the hearing for case 24-024 and ask if there's any public comment regarding this case. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing for case 24-024. Any discussion or questions by the commission or staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, noted, thank you. All right, need a motion then?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 24-024, the downtown master plan update, subject to staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 24-024, uptown, updated downtown master plan. Can I have the roll call, please?
Kepler?
Yes.
Cocharney?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Recused, abstained.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wenland?
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, we have, do we have proof of publication for case 24-034, the updated preamble to Title 11?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I will then open the public hearing for case 24-034. Any public comment on this case? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing for case 24-034. Discussions and questions or comments by commission or staff? No? Did we want to address at all the transition that we have? I guess we've kind of talked about that, but...
Yeah, so I can comment real quick. During our work session, leave, one of the new, as mentioned, neighborhood commercials, existing future land use designation. Right now, that land use designation on our compatibility table allows C1. So that's remaining. The addition, we also have community commercial, which allows C1, C2, C3, and R5. Staff has proposed the new land use designation of our service commercial, which is mostly located on our intersections and then moves into mixed transitional or even residential, some component of residential farther away from those intersections. That it contains C1, C2. And then there was staff syndication, there was some comment, both not just that work session, others that have some components of residential. So that'd be R3 and R4. So that's how it's shown on the compatibility table.
Yeah, okay. It's going to be a period of transition there.
But I will, and I will also note that this is one part of that test. So this commission isn't reviewing just the compatibility table and then approving it. If it meets the compatibility table, there's multiple steps to that test. And often, a concept plan is, some type of concept is almost always required or upon submission for a request for rezoning. So all R3 or all R4 might not be compatible based on that multiple-step test. Likewise, other mixtures of those Euclidian zoning districts. So it's one, I wanted to note that as well.
All right, appreciate that. All right, then I will, if there's no other questions or comments, ask for a motion on case 24-034?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 24-034, the public hearing on an ordinance adopting a revised preamble to Title 11.
Second.
Okay, Cory's got the second on that. All right, can we have a roll call on the motion, please?
Kepler?
Yes.
Cocharney?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wenland?
Yes. All right, good, thank you. All right, that would take us to the next case.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next case is case 2334. This is a final plat submission named James Young Edition. A little background, the applicant is James Young, current resident and owner of the parcel highlighted. This plat was submitted in December for review to December 23, Plan Zoning Commission meeting. A staff report was published, and the applicant, based on the contents and the recommendation in that staff report for denial, was deferred by the applicant. This is, that's a resubmit of a plat. The plat proposes splitting a single-family lot with one, which contains one existing single-family home into two-lot, single-family subdivision. The new lot would be for a future single-family home on the south side of the property. Zoning is R1, single-family resident district. Surrounding area is also R1, single-family residence district, except there is a multifamily PUD in the northwest, but it's not accessible to this area, just off of Kimberly Road. A little history, the shape of the current boundaries of the lot in question that's being subdivided were changed. We have a plat of survey. The Lot 2 of Georgia Nancy Coin First Edition was recently developed with a single-family home, and their access is from Kimberly Ridge Road. They also contained an access easement on the rear of their property, which they no longer, which became redundant. So via plat of survey, they did a boundary line adjustment and deeded that rear portion to the lot in question. This created the private drive, which accesses 1211 Kimberly Ridge Road and 1123. There's only two lots that are served by a private drive. This is important because we only, per our code, allow up to three lots, residential lots, to be served by a private drive. Anything more would require the construction of a C Street. So just a little background there. The 2023 plat, I'll call it, proposed a lot to the northeast of, a new lot to the northeast, which kind of was accessible by the private drive but did not contain it. Staff recommended now the plat for the multiple reasons specified in that report, including that burdens on the surrounding neighborhood that outweigh the interest of the developer and the future purchase of the property, the lot configuration, which did not meet the depth-to-width ratio of 3:1, and disorderly development based off, mostly based off of number one, but inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The applicant chose to defer their submission review by two Plan Zoning and have resubmitted a new plat, which differs greatly, in my opinion. The 2024 plat situates the new lot to the south, along the south property line. Contains actually three lots. One lot is an outlot undevelopable for open for green space and contains some photography. But the developable area is situated east and west, is roughly 83 feet wide, which is, meets, is above the minimum for the R1 district. It is 17,000 square feet, which is also above the minimum of 10,000 square feet for the R1 district. So all, this plat does meet all bulk zoning standards required for R1 lot, including lot size and lot shape. I will note that a portion of that 17,000 does contain an easement, so really isn't developable. But if you take the remainder, the easement contains 6,000 square feet of that. You still have almost a 12,000 square foot lot, which is above our minimum. The applicant has submitted a sanitary sewer plan, showing the lot can be served with installation of ladder line connection to sewer access on Kimberly Road. So this is just the sewer plan profile. All of that would be contained within the owner's property and also right-of-way. This also shows an aerial overlay. You can see how the plat aligns or just overlays with the aerial. And where the ease, where the driveway would be situated. Driveway on the proposed Lot 1, which contains existing house. They are proposing to vacate any easement on there, which really doesn't serve a purpose. The property to ease their access is gained through an existing easement, separate existing easement. And then the Lot 2 would retain that easement from the private drive. After publication of the staff report last week, on the 10th, staff has received public input regarding this proposal from neighbors. Said this input has been forwarded to the commission. Two main points were brought forward that staff was unaware of. These topics include stormwater and some of the, basically the maintenance and agreement of that private drive. Currently, 1023, which is directly south of the proposed subdivision, experienced excessive runoff during rain events. Given the topography and location of the new lot, it is unclear how a future single-family home would affect existing conditions. This would be the only review, other than a building permit, post-approval of any, as far as planning goes, of a stormwater, really. We do have our erosion control inspector, and they would create erosion plans during construction. But given this new information, staff is going, recommending either postponing or this case, it's for adequate time to investigate any stormwater, potential stormwater. There might not be, but given the timing issues. Also, the second issue brought to bear is the private drive. The proposed new lot would require access from that private drive, which is inherent. But a new agreement or an easement would need to be in place for this to occur. So currently, the house to the northeast, where my cursor is, proposed Lot 1, and a portion of the southern lot, which doesn't use the access, doesn't use the easement for their access, but they do own, or they do have to pay for a portion of it, are part of an agreement. And that was brought to bear. How does, how are they, what's forcing them to terms on that agreement? I will cite, we have held this condition on other cases, just to produce an agreement, not arbitrated before. So that is being recommended as well for more time for staff to investigate that, possibly a condition for a future recommendation. Staff did produce a memo that was distributed to the commission today regarding the same things I just spoke to. And we're not aware of those issues. Given the new information, staff is now recommending the commission postpone our table, a recommendation of case 2334, to give staff adequate time to investigate the issues and report back to the commission. I can take any questions.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Questions and comments from the commission with regard to this case, please?
Sounds like we need to wait until we have more information.
It does, it does. Looking at it, the recommendation is that the applicant, applicants engineer in the city investigate potential impacts of the stormwater. We saw some pictures there, trying to recommend our, or the plat to the city council and then resolve the access agreement between the relevant parties. I guess the other comments or observations from the commission? And I'll open it up so that we can capture at this point any comment from anyone who may have come in regard to this case to the audience. So is there one in the audience with regard to this case that would like to provide comment at this time? Yes, sir?
Benjamin Baher from Townsend Engineering, on behalf of the landowner. So there's a question in regards to that easement for the roadway access. In 1948 is when that easement was first established between three property owners there. And then when Nancy, Georgia Nancy Coin's First Edition came in, that easement was further expanded upon, and lots two and three of that addition shared each a third of the cost, and the other third is borne by this Jim Young currently, who's the landowner. So it was shared by the three. And then, and that easement, when Jim Young purchased from Lot 2 of Coin's First Edition, along with that, he purchased the easement and the maintenance. Like, he took over the maintenance of it. So currently today, Jim Young pays two-thirds of that maintenance agreement. And that is recorded on document 201730578. And it conveys it to Jim Young. And then with this subdivision, him getting two lots, he will then divide it out, so Lot 1 and 2 of this addition will each have a third, and then that other one in the northeast corner will have the other third. So that's how the maintenance agreement will work. It'll be the three parties using the driveway will utilize the driveway. It's slightly confusing because there's, like I said, it goes back to 1948 on the documents on that. But that original driveway did go all the way south to Kimberly Road through the, I think it's Florences live in that house right now, but it went all the way south. That right-of-way with that little cul-de-sac did not exist in 1948. So I guess that's, that's how the easements will be taken care of. Jim Young has two-thirds right today, and the other third is owned by that, right there where Taylor's highlighting right now.
Okay.
And it'll get divided. As far as the drainage issue is concerned, I looked at that as soon as I was made aware of it. That picture that was shown by Taylor where the, the standing water is there? Yeah, that, that area is a flat area. We looked at putting a house, and that's, that's going to be right where that proposed house would be. If you, I put on a, like a 20,000 square, no, not 2,000 square foot house, and that, that covers that area, you're not going to have, you're not going to build a house that you're going to have water coming to you. You can have drainage swales on both sides. And then the drainage from this area generally flows south and west. In R1 district, which this is, you, you have a seven-and-a-half-foot setback. So on the south side, there's plenty of room for a drainage swale there to not impact the landowner to the south if you were to have an exposed foundation on that, on that side. And I think that's what, all I got.
All right, appreciate the insight. Yep, thank you. Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Well, I appreciate the input that we just got, but I feel like we still need to give city staff the opportunity to discuss this further. So I would make a motion that we table case 23-034.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify, if we table it, then we have to have a motion to take it off the table? So I would prefer a motion to postpone until the next regularly, regular, regularly scheduled meeting?
All right.
In June, whatever, whatever the date is in June?
Then I will adopt, adapt my motion.
Very adaptable, thank you.
I'm very adaptable.
Good.
To postpone case 23-034 to the June meeting.
Can I ask a quick question, before you do this?
Yeah, we haven't voted, but, yep. Sure, sure, go ahead, Chris.
I just got a quick question. This is Captain O'Nore. Yeah, Chris Townsend of Townsend Engineering, I'm just curious, is there a timeframe that citizens can come forward with this kind of information? I mean, we have deadlines, you know, where we have to come through. And, you know, our clients are relying on us to get things through. And then when they get tabled like this at the last second, literally at 3 o'clock, we got word of this and had answers for it. Now, the people that brought this forward, I don't see anybody, which seems strange to me. And I'm just wondering, is there a timeline where they have to, you know, they get, they get notice and different things? And just kind of curious, because I think we provided a pretty good explanation. And, you know, I'm just trying to protect my client here, because every minute counts for everybody, you know? And I'm just asking just so that he knows we're doing our job.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Townsend. I, there's, you know, there, the time for the public is at these meetings. There's a balancing test that a lot of these interests get taken into consideration. The public can interact with its government in any number of ways, including emails that we got today. And then it's up to this body to, to make their decision. I think there's a motion and a second for the, the motion to postpone it. They're not under the same deadlines as an applicant would be, so there is a distinction there. But they're interacting, I think, in the way that they, that they're able to.
Yeah, no, fair, great. I think the short version is it hit too late to digest it all and make sure we're doing the right thing from the city standpoint in order to provide the commission a recommendation to proceed. So we just need a little more time to do that. That's my perspective on it, so, yeah. Want to keep it rolling, but need adequate time to review it, so. All right, we had a motion and a second. Who was our second? We need a second. Second, okay. We have a motion and a second to postpone case 23-034, as recommended by staff. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Me opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right, motion carries for recommended to postpone. All right, next case, please. Hello, Greg.
We have a case twenty-four zero three one. It's Hope High's second edition. And, uh, we are, um, already have seen this as an iteration as the first edition. This is going to be a plat. Yelsey Investments of Iowa is asking for a replat of, uh, this into townhouse in single family homes. The, uh, land use is split between urban medium intensity and then urban low intensity. And the predominant two land uses, uh, tend to be the only thing surrounding, uh, the entirety of the subdivision. Uh, you do have some urban medium intensity to the south. And then the remaining area around it is urban low intensity, which does permit the R three designation for the zoning. Uh, the surrounding zoning are three here for the entirety of the proposed, uh, first half of this subdivision are two to the north where the church and the school are proposed. Everything else around here is a one. Go to the first, uh, site plan. And what originally had been presented, uh, was one detention area that has changed now to two detention areas and additional areas of infrastructure and the easements necessary to support them have been added. These lots here, lots twenty through three to twenty-eight have also transitioned into other uses from what had been in the, uh, first edition. Second edition now has added, as you can see, the two detention outlots and a variety more of the drainage easements necessary for the water to get through. And then there's also other engineering, uh, that's taking place here. Big changes occurred over here though, where lots twenty-eight through, or twenty-three through twenty-eight now have the, uh, come, uh, a different grouping of lots where we have, uh, eleven lots now where we had six prior. These are all now going to be townhouses when before they were a combination of one, two family dwelling here and then single family straddling either side. As a result of that, we are going to see a different setback. Buffer yard required here, thirty-five feet with berm facing Hopewell. The buffer yard here is fifty feet without the berm. That's due to the nature of the structures involved being townhouses. Still, the concept plan, as it had been issued through the zoning process, is stated essentially that this is permitted because it follows that plan as it had been originally permitted. Single family housing that was over here was not originally part of that. It was originally townhouses. So it follows that. Outlet C is still the reserve area right here where there is a second phase. Site plans will be required for each one of these townhouse lots. Utility connections for water and gas will come, uh, from the north from Hopewell Avenue. Electrical will come from the east along Criswell for the utilities. The, uh, access, uh, coming from, uh, Hopewell Avenue, Woody Creek Lane is stubbed to, to the south and eventually past what will be the second phase of Outlet C further to the south connecting to additional subdivisions. So that will be drive is here and it connects to Phase Way, which will be part of a pattern here, which will be the entirety of the subdivision. No connectivity is allowed for any of the lots that are facing Criswell to Criswell Street. An extra seventeen feet has been, uh, taken for dedication and right away for Criswell Street improvements. And then there will be turnarounds at each end of the street structure for this first phase to enable, uh, emergency vehicles and sanitation vehicles to, uh, maneuver. Five-foot-high sidewalks will be placed throughout the entirety of the interior. There will also be one, uh, placed along Hopewell as their recreational trail is already further north. Uh, Criswell Street will not have a sidewalk placed along it at this time. Stormwater detention will be accommodated with these detention basins as shown here. There will be a water quality element also added. Staff in reviewing this proposal would recommend approval with the two conditions that a site development plan is required for all lots, proposed to contain three or more joint residential units, as well that the second phase of this project will contain gravity sewer, which will be required, and that any portion, uh, of that remaining in Outlet C to be developed will have a minimum cover of five feet for that sanitary sewer from the top of pipe. Staff in, uh, reviewing these conditions and the proposal would make a recommendation for approval. I would ask, are there any questions?
All right. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Mark, anything since publication or presentation?
Uh, no, 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 nothing different. I would just note that your conditions in the staff report are the actual conditions. The, the site plan requirement is just a requirement of code. Uh, I think Greg was mentioning it just to kind of emphasize that point, but the actual, um, condition relative to, um, the second phase for the, you know, the sewer building is, is the actual condition.
Yeah, okay. And I, I saw that on there. So there, is there any, can you give me a little more insight? So how is the current development or phase being? Is that?
Let me give you an update on that, Mr. Chairman. So this parcel, Greg, can you go back to your aerial map that might show some of the adjoining? Thank you. Um, right now there is no sanitary, gravity sanitary sewer that's immediately adjacent, except for on the north side of Hopewell. Um, the kicker with that is that this whole property drains south. So you're bucking grade, um, to be able to serve that.
Fighting gravity.
You're fighting gravity. That's exactly what you're doing.
Okay.
So it, the first phase, they can still make gravity work. Um, however, the second phase, when we started looking into their full engineering, uh, they were coming up short on depth and some of the homes, uh, were going to have to have ejector pumps, which was not something we wanted for new construction.
Yeah.
So we're, we're working with the developer. Um, they're most likely going to be considering either a lift station, uh, that will allow them to just gravity flow that all to the south and then pump back up to the north. It would cover up the entire addition. Uh, or we did meet with, uh, both the developer and the property owner to the west, um, just this week, trying to see if there's a way that we can, um, between both parties, work out an, an easement to provide gravity sanitary sewer coming through that parcel. Uh, there is a large transmission main that runs through the west side of that property. So it's there. It just is not immediately adjacent. It's about fifteen hundred feet away, unfortunately. And there are no easements through that property right now.
And there may be some sewer coming to the east eventually, depending on what happens with development, but not in the...
So the, the sewer to the east, Criswell's a ridge. Um, so all of our sewers that are in place now are only sized to handle up to Criswell. And then anything east of there, again, would only be sized to handle back up to Criswell heading west.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be able to ever cross over between the two.
All right. Thank you. Sheds a little light on that. All right. Other questions and comments by commission?
Yes, Brad, I have one more question. By moving forward with this first phase and not having total solution for the second phase, are we somehow painting somebody in a corner or creating an issue that somewhere down the line can't be resolved?
No. So the, the, the condition probably should have been maybe reworded a little better. Um, at this point, with the conversations we've had with the developer, it's going to be one of those two options to move forward with this. It would not make any sense to do just the first edition heading north and then pump right back through it from a financial standpoint. So.
Right.
It's either going to be gravity sewer to the west for the whole addition or the lift station for the entire addition.
Okay.
Yeah, that's our fault. We probably should have reworded that a little better.
I understand. Thank you.
I got one quick question. Are there other parts of the property that aren't developed yet that are going to have the same issue that, uh, the city's kind of working to get ahead of?
Um, not with their parcel. Um, the property to the south will, will need that exact same.
Yeah.
Um, gravity sewer to the, to the, coming from the west.
Just curiosity.
It would solve a couple of issues. That's why the, that I kind of involved myself with that, uh, that discussion with the property owners, hoping that we can come to some type of an arrangement.
Sure. Makes sense.
I'm fairly certain we covered this, but if you could give us a little reminder on, um, how the sidewalks will work on Criswell eventually and who's going to pick up that tab?
Uh, sure. So when Criswell, so we actually will be starting our kind of long-awaited project out there in about two weeks. Um, so that's going to be a full-depth reclamation. It's a maintenance project, but it's going to turn Criswell at least into an asphalt driving surface for the time being, as opposed to the old seal coat surfaces out there. Um, we've got a eight to eleven million dollar bill to try to convert that to a urban section. At that point, we would, the city would install sidewalks and most likely a trail along there. But that is not currently funded yet. Um, a lot of dynamics, one being the price, um, two being the fact that it's still currently half-city, half-county. Um, so our east annexation, if and when that happens, will play a lot into that timing. But some of the, the previously developed lots that do have frontages, um, I think I'd have to check with Jeremy, our building manager, but generally speaking, um, a bond is required to be posted, uh, when the sidewalk can't be physically installed since they are required by code to do so.
So will, is that the case here?
Yep, that will be the case on, on those east lots. But again, the city will take care of that, uh, when that urban reconstruction happens.
Thank you.
Others in the commission?
I have a couple of questions. Um, do we have a rough site plan of what's phase two? Or something that, that connects?
Sure. If he has the preliminary plat as one of the...
I didn't have it, have it in.
I mean, even if it's preliminary, just, um, my second part of the question was the temporary turnarounds. Are they also places for holding snow piles?
Yep. So that, we require that for any dead end in a subdivision. Uh, we just build them out of rock. It's basically just a way for exactly that. Our snow piles can turn around, our garbage trucks turn around, uh, and emergency services if they ever had to. Uh, basically the, the second addition, the, the east loop is going to loop back and tie into the west. And then there is a stub that ties, um, to the south as well.
Okay. Does connect for the south?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. This will connect all the way through eventually to, um, Woody Creek Lane, I believe is the, the name of it. But it all ultimately runs all the way to, uh, Old Hunter Woods. So there's several subdivisions that it will connect through.
Got it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Nope. Anyone in the audience with regard to this case? Yep. All right. We'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number two-four dash zero three one, subject to the staff recommendations.
I'm second.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-four zero three one, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay. Thank you. Twenty-four dash zero three one is recommended for approval. All right. Next case.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this case is essentially the last, uh, element in the Wyndham West additions. Uh, it's sort of an infill, if you want to call it that. Uh, it is Wyndham West fourth. It is near Merrifield Drive, which tends to bisect, uh, north and south. And then Isleworth Avenue, which is the main east-west route in the northern part of, uh, the subdivision is laid out. This is the area right here. Woodland Drive comes up and then Merrifield will be joined here. Isleworth Avenue will come through here. And then you have a means of entry and exit through this area. It's proposed by Adam Sights of Wyndfield West LLC. This is a development for single-family housing. Again, we see this mixture of urban low intensity and urban medium intensity land uses. And the surrounding land uses primarily of urban low intensity. And then, uh, this urban medium intensity and urban low intensity permit the current status of zoning being R three for this rectangular piece that has yet to be developed. The surrounding zoning is A one to the east and then R two to the north and then R three for the surrounding area. This is originally preliminarily platted at one time to have twenty-five lots, single-family housing. That has changed and now we have on six point two-one acres, single-family units. But I should say it was twenty-five lots. Now it's reduced to twenty, single-family lots. Utilities are present along Isleworth Avenue, Merrifield Drive. Sanitary sewer service will come from the north side on, uh, Isleworth Avenue. And then Merrifield Drive, uh, on the east side. And then water will be on the west side of Merrifield and then on, uh, the south side of Isleworth Avenue. And access again, Merrifield coming through, as I mentioned earlier. And then there's the circulation connectivity will be completed at this point, once this gets done. Once we have the, uh, completion of the utilities and all of the, uh, paving in place. It'll be five-foot-wide sidewalks along all the interior streets of the subdivision. Stormwater will be taken care of through Outlet W right here, which was platted in the first edition. And this is approximately where we're looking right now for this addition. And that will all be conveyed to this outlot and there will be a water quality element as well. Staff looks at this as meeting comprehensive plan goal D, this project, and providing housing options and reinvesting in neighborhoods as part of the comprehensive plan. We make recommendation for approval. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Mark, anything to add from staff?
No.
Okay. Questions and comments from the commission, please? Pretty straightforward. Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. All right. We'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case twenty-four dash zero three three, final plat, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-four dash zero 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 three three. Wyndham West fourth edition final plat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries to approve a recommendation of approval twenty-four dash zero three three. Okay. Next case.
Uh, next case, uh, Mr. Chairman, is twenty-four zero three six. It is four-three-eight-three fifty-third Avenue. And it is a site development plan, which does change somewhat of the original design layout for the building. Uh, this area is the, one of the last remaining lots that does face along, uh, this stretch of fifty-third Avenue that's yet to be developed. It's lot three shops of the Woodlands. Proposed by Ryan Winmiller, Winmiller Design built Aspen Homes. The, uh, area is, uh, surrounded pretty much by urban medium intensity land use, except to the north where it is urban low intensity. And that facilitates the, uh, zoning of this site as C one. It, uh, also corresponds with what we're trying to do is attract and retain business and industry with this zoning class. C one is to the, uh, west, to the east and south, to the southeast. We have R five zoning in the, uh, area of the Village of the Woodlands. And then we also have R three to the north, which is a mixed residence district. Lot of record here is shown as, uh, lot three. There is a plat note restricting access coming in from Ontario Drive only. There is no direct access out to fifty-third or to Slate Creek coming on in. This is the original site plan, which showed five units, and this is the restaurant area. So there are five retail units and a restaurant area that was approved in two thousand twenty-two. When we come up here with the current proposal, we have a, an area which, uh, approximately thirty-five hundred square feet. Staff did an evaluation. It's about thirty-five eighty-nine square feet of usable area that is for servicing customers. So we consider it to fall within the confines of the C one zoning district. Retail now is two, twenty-four hundred eighty-seven square feet, which was produced from the original plan of sixty-eight fifty-seven for retail. The total building is now seventy-four forty-six, uh, not the previous nine-eight-five-seven. Look at the elevations. There will be two means of entry to the restaurant and then we have the remainder for retail. Access and thoroughfare plan, uh, lot three, again, as I mentioned earlier, shall have access only from Ontario. The Pine Creek Lane right here, which is another means of access to the area. And this is primarily single-family residential further to the south. Uh, we have a Slate Creek Drive, which also feeds down in here to these, uh, townhomes. Uh, and then we have over here Panda Drive, which feeds into Ontario is another means to come out to fifty-third Avenue. As we see here, the, uh, site development plan, there are number of utilities already available as there were from the original site plan. They have not changed location. It's just a matter of connecting to the structure. And then water, gas and electrical mainly come from this area right here, along with the sanitary. Terms of the pedestrian access trail, there will be a six-foot-wide proposed sidewalk going here. Five feet for the perimeter here. And we already have the recreational trail to the north. And we already have the recreational trail to the north. We did some calculations. There is a difference between what was in the table showing capacity in the restaurant versus what the actual production was for parking spaces. The restaurant itself will require forty-six spaces. The retail portion of this area is going to require thirteen. Sixty-nine spaces are provided, fifty-nine are what are required. Landscaping is the same as it was before. Twenty-one tree factors spread throughout the area on this parcel, without, of course, any encroachment into, uh, the easement areas. We want to keep those free and clear and the lighting is what it was before. And we want that required as being downcast. Would add the condition that for this area right here, which is this outdoor area, since there will be serving of alcohol in that outdoor area, that there will be a special use permit that will be required from the board of adjustment prior to city council consideration of this site plan. Given that requirement, staff recommends approval with the conditions that are listed here regarding tree planting, evaluation of further tenants regarding parking and the right of use, and also the special permit for outdoor alcohol service. I would ask, are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Greg, appreciate it. Mark, anything to add?
Chairman, I would like to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you did receive an email, uh, before, uh, today's meeting. Sorry for the late publication there. Um, but we did want to share with you some of the changes that went on and some of the analysis that staff did. So the building is actually a little bit smaller, slightly smaller and slightly moved on the, on the lot. If you look at that, was it seventy-five hundred square foot building? The part, the amount dedicated to restaurant is actually bigger than three thousand five hundred square feet. Our neighborhood commercial restaurants are limited three thousand five hundred square feet. The petitioner, the petitioner asked, was that a net measurement or gross measurement? Uh, fair question. So we, as staff, determined that is actually a net measurement, uh, based on our past practice and interpretation of code. So that thirty-five hundred square feet is net. So we're netting out or excluding non-customer areas, um, both inside and outside the restaurant. So if you have, um, things like chillers and, and, um, walk-in freezers and those things, where customers aren't served, we're not, we're not holding you, that against you. Um, and so the zoning determination letter, uh, I, I did place at your, at your desk or Taylor placed at your desk.
Yeah.
So you can see that. So that's how we get to that thirty-five hundred square feet number. And that's keeping with past practice, it just kind of memorializes it. That's something we'll probably address in code going forward with our zoning code update. Now we have our comp plan basically done. So I want you to be aware of that. And that's how we get, get to that, you know, thirty-five hundred ar- area.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
The other thing too is, uh, one, we can look at this and see that the outdoor patio area is approximately three hundred fifty square feet. So it's not going to be used year round, it's going to be used partially. So that's another factor, I think, that we-
That's a good point.
Looking at too.
That, so that does not figure into the calculation?
It does.
It does, but it, it's not, i- i- again, you're only, you're ver- there's a very small difference. But if you remove that, then you're way below that thirty-five hundred, uh, area.
But that other area that's out on the patio is not part of the calculation. It's like the-
Outdoor kitchen, the-
The outdoor kitchen.
Staffing, uh, prep area, because they do have the kind of, uh, an area where they, they will be handling the food behind the scenes, not for customer access.
Okay.
It's not included.
Questions and comments, other questions and comments by the commission? Anyone in the audience with regard? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm here to let you know-
Can you tell us who you are so we capture that?
I'm sorry, I'm, my name is Ron Roman and I live in Slate Creek Drive. I live just two doors down from the existing property.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, I would like to let you know that, uh, this proposal, by reducing the parking, will only exaggerate an existing problem that you're probably not aware of. And I have brought some proof for that. Oak Grove Tavern, right now, as we sit here, is parking on the street. They don't have enough parking up there available. And they're adjacent to where this parking lot's going to be. And it's going to be also accessible from Oak Grove Tavern, which means the ten or fifteen cars I have a picture of just an hour ago, that are parking on the street right now, will be going into this lot.
Are they parked on Ontario, just to clarify?
I have a picture of it, yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I also have a picture of-
Bring the pictures up if you want to see them.
Yeah.
Also I have a, I'm sorry, I can't hear him.
No, I'm sorry, he's going to grab some pictures and we have a-
I can grab those pictures for you and we can distribute them out here or we can display them on the screen however you want.
Okay, great.
You can, you can make your comments while I'll make sure they can see the picture.
These are, uh, the first ones are on, on Stout. And then the last one today, which you might want to show first-
Yep.
Is this one.
Yep, we can put them on, uh, projector later.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
F I I T skills here real quick.
Yeah. Not keep the day job, right?
Somebody else can do this.
You can go ahead, sir, we'll, we'll just get this over here.
Okay, so this is picture number one. This shows looking, uh, southeast from, uh, Ontario on the east side of the entrance. This is, uh, just south of the, of the, uh, bank. And the circled item is the no parking zone that is signed that is there now. As you can see, there's parking on both sides of that street. This is on a Saturday afternoon about three o'clock. This happens on the weekend consistently. I can't say every weekend, but it happens often enough where it's probably fifty percent of the time, especially in the summer months. Okay, number two, if you want to show that up. This is the bank's lot. Those are not bank, um, bank visitors and they're not employees' cars. So the overflow of the parking lot on the east side of our area entrance goes into the bank. As I said, there's not enough parking already for the existing businesses there. Okay, if you could move to number three, please? Again, there's the sign. This shows the south side of the west, uh, road into our addition. And you can see that road from both sides, from the east and the west side, is pretty well filled that, that particular Saturday. Okay, and if you could go to the fourth one? As I said, this shows an hour ago. Oak Grove Tavern is in the background there. And there's at least fifteen cars already parked on the, on the street. Now, on a Saturday, Friday afternoon on a Saturday, both sides are filled. They're not paying any attention to the no parking. Now, to me, common sense dictates that there's not enough parking right now for the businesses there. I don't know, how are you going to compound that with another two hundred, uh, capac- two hundred plus capacity building? And I'm not anti-growth. I think we do need a restaurant out there. But I don't think the size of that and the lack of parking is going to help the situation. It's only going to make it worse. In addition to that, the entranceway is going to require you post no, no parking signs on that too. Or there'll be parking in the entrance, only allowing one car going each way. Um, only one minor thing, and, and I know the, uh, the, uh, utilities run behind that property. But, uh, every other, every other property that faces fifty-third that has a building there, has, has, uh, landscaping on the south side of those buildings. And I wish you could figure out some way of doing something about blocking the back of that business. Is there any questions?
Mm-hmm, questions from the commission for Ron?
May I, may I, uh, introduce these as evidence for you?
Absolutely, uh, yes, please.
And then lastly, if in fact this does go through, those sign, that signage for those existing signs need to be changed for that side completely of the street.
The parking signs?
Parking, no, no parking on the south side completely.
Mm-hmm.
Because they'll leave the, leave the one spot where the sign is and they'll park all around it.
Can you guys clarify the parking situation in the street parking dynamics? What's permitted and not out there?
He's correct, parking is only permitted on the-
North side?
Yep.
So we have an enforcement opportunity?
Yeah, we just have to pass that along to the police. Unfortunately, nothing we're in any control of here.
Is there any commission for Ron?
I, I can tell you the, the reasoning behind the original no parking. So when Ontario was built, there was parking allowed on both sides. Um, there were no parking restrictions. When Stouts was going in, I believe it was when they had just opened, we were getting complaints that the businesses were directing their employees to park on the street to try to preserve every onsite parking space. And I wonder if that same thing is happening at Oak Grove? If, um, if they're directing employees to be parking there at all times. But again, it, parking is allowed, but the, the double sided is something we're going to have to pass along to-
And that's along the entire south side of-
Yep, it's the entire road.
Okay. And then can we address to the, the current count and the, the code? So we can clarify that where we're at with, I think you said sixty-nine spaces were required. Is the, is the retail use identified for the remainder of the building? So we know what the count will be?
It was fifty-nine, fifty-nine total.
Fifty-nine?
Rare footage, thirteen, uh, spaces were for the commercial, uh, retail. And then forty-six for the interior for the restaurant.
So they're, they are, they are overparked, they're appropriately parked. So they're, they, they are parked enough for their use that they're proposing.
Yeah, Chris Townsend with Townsend Engineering. And I can, uh, things have changed the hair here and there with this. And so what we've got now is, uh, for the restaurant, which is five thousand square feet, we don't use the thirty-five hundred, we actually use the five thousand. So it's one per hundred square feet. So it's required fifty, plus the, the patio, we, I think we had four hundred and sixty-five square feet. So we had five, so it was fifty-five total for the restaurant. The retail's twenty-five hundred, which is one per two hundred. So we needed thirteen more. So I think that was sixty-eight and we actually provided seventy-one, which we had some more. So Greg was right, I think we were about ten over. But we had some parallel spaces that just the city didn't like. And I, truthfully, we didn't like them that much either, but we were just trying to get every single space, you know? So we're, so we're three more than we should be. And I know that, I mean, I go here every once in a while, hate to admit it, but it's easier to park on, on Ontario. So a lot of times people park there. And, and I know it's full a lot of times around, no question. But, um, they'll park there when their space is available, it's just easier. You'll see pickup trucks and things are just big, you know? So I mean, that's kind of another part of the problem, I think, or part of the reason, I guess.
We'll have you come back up to the mic again, Ron, if you wanted to have more. But what, what I'm hearing, just for, you know, repeating, I guess, is that per the current Bettendorf code, they have met the parking requirements for the five thousand square foot restaurant and-
Thirty-five hundred square foot.
Of usable space, so, yep. Either, either way, the, the, the code requirement's been met, which is, which is one of our challenges here. The code, the code's been met, but the reality is something different from what you're experiencing out there. And unfortunately, we can't over, um, require based on what the code is. Um, I don't know if I'm saying that the best way, but-
Yeah, well, and if there's people that are breaking the law by, by parking illegally, that's not the petitioners. In this case, the petitioner's not, aside if you go there and park illegally, the petitioner's not, that's not the petitioner's fault. That's not relative to this case. This case is accurately parked and, and providing a parking plan that is plus what the city's requiring. So I'm a, a little nervous about weighing that, that one user's discretion against this, this user.
But I, I would strongly encourage enforcement of the current no parking zone, which may push and shove some, the car's got to go somewhere. There's a lot of activity. When Sprouts first came in there, it was super busy, not so busy anymore. Um, but it was a real parking issue and some, you know, flash, everybody goes and it tapers down to some kind of normal. But, um, the bottom line is, this user, um, petitioner is meeting the current parking codes. Um, but from a neighbor standpoint, I think enforcement, um, is reasonable from your standpoint for the no parking areas for sure. But did you want to add more to that, Ron?
Uh, could I just add a brief history?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I moved back to this area, uh, when I graduated from University of Iowa with a finance degree and after being in the service in nineteen seventy-two. So I've lived here for fifty-four, fifty-two years. Uh, I moved from the other side of the river because of the other problems over there.
Good call.
And I'm very happy to be over here. And I moved to Bettendorf five years ago and I'm very happy to be in Bettendorf. Uh, the one thing I've noticed and observed, by the way, I was also on the, uh, Transportation Committee for the chamber in the, uh, the Bettendorf Chamber for six years. And I chaired that for two years. Uh, but, uh, one thing I have noticed is that, um, quite frequently, there are, um, real estate, um, uh, real estate agents and, uh, uh, adjusters or, uh, uh, assessors that have been on both councils in the history. And they have, uh, seem to have a, a, a spot on the, the positive things for the developers as opposed to watching out for the neighborhoods. And I've noticed, uh, the, the extreme example I can give you is Jersey Ridge Grill. I'd lived in that neighborhood for forty-two years. If you're familiar with that, I'm surprised somebody hasn't been killed on that street. That was a strip mall converted to a bar. And the capacity never should have had that small of a parking lot. Uh, people crossed that street at night after drinking all evening in the dark. There was no lights that half a block south of fifty-third. And most of the cars were parking over the bank and the church. So that, that's an extreme example of how the code does not apply on a logical basis. And I would encourage you to maybe take another look at this. Because the situation in our home, home area right now is, is, is going to be, because the code qualifies it, is going to be a disaster. And there's no, stopping the parking on one side isn't going to help it. You'd have to stop it on both sides.
Can you address the legal perspective on that? Mr. Chairman, could I just ask, just for clarification?
Sure.
I think Greg did some research under the cross easements. And I'm wondering, by actually adding another parking lot into the subdivision, and if there are cross easements, so that that parking lot could serve other, other users, you know, offsetting hours and such? Greg, did you look into that?
I mean, I, I think we've, throughout this development, that was the concept that, you know, the parking was shared evenly amongst all of these lots. And i- it's been staged in, in that manner. And, uh, certainly we want the developer to abide by that. And, and if it, if there needs to be any, uh, you know, type of agreement as such, that there is that sharing, then, uh, we want to require that, I imagine, or this body could, uh, in case that is not the case. But I believe when this was all laid out initially, and this had been site planned out, uh, for some time, all these lots were going to be sharing parking and overlapping based on the times of different uses that were there. Because not everything here is a restaurant or a bar. There's a lot of these offices that are commingled here and their hours of operation. Once five o'clock shows up, they're not there anymore.
Hey, thanks.
I, I don't know if, if the engineers for the applicant have access to those cross easements, if they exist. I think we could work that out, if that was a concern.
But this, this proposed development meets current code requirements. So notwithstanding the reality of what's on the ground out there, this body, Ron, has to look at the constraints of what's provided in the code. And this development meets that code requirement. It, it begs the question of awareness and making sure that, hey, if we ended up with a whole basket full of these all over town, we might be, from a code standpoint-
Reevaluating.
We need to reevaluate our parking ratios. Um, just like handicap for the aging population and different things, dynamics change. But today, from this board's perspective, and I really appreciate your, your input and the pictures. It's very graphic to look at and say, hey, here's reality in what we're dealing with. But from the, this side of the, of the desk, we have the code that we have to abide by and that's our, our barometer. So I appreciate that, but from our perspective, it, and I don't know if you'd add any other-
I, yeah, I think you said it very well, Roy. These are hard cases and, you know, but, uh, we do have to look at, at what our law is. And currently, our, our law, our city code says that, that this is adequately parked. Uh, there's always, you know, the opportunity to, to look at the, the legislative side of it and to, to determine whether those ratios should change or should, um, be different for particular types of uses. But at this point, we are applying this application to our law, um, sitting as a judge, essentially. And, and, um, and this seems to meet the law.
The other dynamic, and, and I, I probably want- The other dynamic, and I probably want to state it just for the record, is the reality on the ground is that the landlord, the owner of the property, needs to make sure that the building space that he's renting is functional for the user. And if it gets too underparked out there and people can't get their customers in their business, there's gonna be tenants that are gonna be really unhappy. So there needs to be, to your point, cross easements, whatever, a practical solution, or it's not gonna work from a landlord and tenant's standpoint. It's gotta work for everybody. So we would encourage the owner, developer, landlord to do what he can to make everybody accommodated out there. But it is meeting the code. So any other comments? Last call on this case? Okay, come back to the commission for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case twenty-four dash zero-three-six, site development plan, subject to staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you. We have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-four dash zero-three-six, Lot Three Shops of the Woodlands First Edition. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, motion to recommend approval for twenty-three, twenty-four dash zero-three-six. Thanks. Okay.
Our next case, Mr. Chairman, is twenty-four zero-three-eight, and it's twenty-five-seventy Middle Road. It's a site development plan for change of use and also for the parking space increase. What we have is this location here, nearby Spruce Hills Drive, right here, and then Twenty-third Street, and then Middle Road. The applicant is Matt Mulligan of Switch Mulligan LLC. Currently, community commercial land use. It's a C-two zoning. As you can see, there are a variety of different land uses with the church here, public, semi-public, urban medium intensity where the bank is, and then the majority of his community commercial throughout. We have park ground to the south, and then we have urban low intensity R-one zoned area also to the south. And you can see that here, R-one throughout the park area, C-one for the church and some other buildings and the lending institution. The bank is C-two. And this area predominantly is C-two and C-one throughout most of this juncture here with Spruce Hills and Middle Road. And then there's a delineation between Middle Road. North of that tends to be more commercial, south tends to be like in a recreational or in a single-family residence zoned area. Ewing Bettendorf First Edition, this is Lot Three, and potentially, there'll be a portion of this flagged area here that goes to Lot One that will be sold to the owners of Lot Three. That's still in the works. And that is a twenty-six-foot wide flag portion that will adjoin to this lot to help widen the parking aisle and provide another aisle of parking. Part of the condition of the evaluation by city council is a proof of sale, sales contract to acquire that flag portion being committed prior to city council oversight and eventual determination as to approval or not approval. The first configuration that was approved originally in twenty-twenty-three shows that it's still the two means of entry, and then coming in, means of entry here with one aisle of parking, and then a drive-through window here. The updated version shows an additional fourteen parking spaces with two aisles of parking, dumpster location here, and then the means of entry. We see that parking totals have gone up. Golf simulation area shall basically occupy this portion here of the building. The remainder is anticipated maybe for a type of medical service here. And then these two areas here occupied potentially maybe by a restaurant. The current structure follows the footprint that was seen, and the plan is approved in twenty-twenty-three. You'll have a patio for outdoor service here, and this area here is going to be occupied by X-Golf, which is a golf simulation, limited impact in terms of recreational use. Special use permits were obtained for this outdoor patio and also a bar in the internal portion of the X-Golf site. The northwest corners already provides a mean of access for the thoroughfare. Essentially, coming in, you'll find that from Middle Road, this access allows access to the adjoining area here on Lot Three through what was something that was guaranteed from the bank site, northwest corners previously. Go to the building footprint, and it remains the same as before. All utilities are in the same area in terms of connection. That is really not what is at issue here. Go to the pedestrian trail access, and this access is already in place. The sidewalk is, there's a recreational trail to the south and also went along Spruce Hills Drive. Calculations were conducted as part of the special use permit acquisition. They were broken down so that fifty-five parking spaces are required for X-Golf, which is going in. That leaves twenty-two other spaces for other uses for this building in the future. Staff at such time will evaluate, and we require that the developer indicate to us those other uses as they may go in, so that we can look at the uses to whether or not it's a used by rights special use or whether it's permitted, and then how much parking will be required for those particular uses. Landscape plan is as it was before. There was not enough parking space added to require more tree factors. There are a total of eleven tree factors, seven for the area adjoining, and then four for the interior for the vehicular use area. As part of this, an agreement between the party to the north on Lot One and then Lot Three, placing that landscaping here to the north boundary to act as a buffer, was part of the arrangement that was made on the prior site development plan. Lighting plan is going to remain the same. And I put in the hours of operation here, Monday through Thursday, ten AM to ten PM, Friday, ten AM to midnight, and then Saturday, eight AM to one AM Sunday, and then on Sundays, eight AM to ten PM. Special use permit conditions that were added were the verification, again, of the parking based on whose leasing is tenants. And that has to be evaluated by city staff before we issue any changes or any permitting for the building. And then approval of the revised site plan is being brought here forward to this body, but it is required to be approved by city council in order to activate any of the aspects of the outdoor patio, liquor service, and then also the bar for the X-Golf. And we have the conditions that are listed here in the report. Staff is making a recommendation of or approval based on the conditions that are listed here and the approval of the special use permits. I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Mark, anything to add from your perspective? Okay. Questions or comments from the commission regarding this case?
I have several questions.
Okay, Anne?
We talked about a drive-through in the first iteration of this. Is that still in the plans?
Yes, it's what's proposed up here. And there's actually an opening on the side of the building for that, I believe.
And in the staff report, said that the owner, developer, is willing to work with the property owners to the north on creating a buffer. Has there been any discussion, any meetings? Is that going to take place? Do we know any more about that?
I think there was one meeting that was already held. And it is something that, in terms of that buffering, whether it could be evergreens, and I, that's, I think, one of the suggestions that we made as staff, is that the tree factors should be met out in that way. We have not revised our landscape ordinance at this point. So that means you're doubling that, those tree factors by planning evergreens. You're establishing an even more larger number of trees that could be placed there, and they'd be year-round as a buffer, being evergreens. And we brought that up as staff. If it needs to be brought up as a condition of some sort, placed in maybe by this body to guarantee that there is some type of agreement arranged, maybe to prior issuing building permits or something, that's up to this body and also staff.
Well, I suppose. If the developer's willing to do it, it's to benefit the property owners to the north. And if they don't want to have that, then that's their decision.
Yeah. If I can weigh in, Mr. Chairman, I think there's been discussion on that issue, also discussion on, because the same property owners, the property that they're looking to, and they may have already purchased property from. So I don't know if those issues have been combined in their minds, and they're kind of working through that.
Okay.
The developer is here, present at the podium. Maybe it will shed some light on these issues for us.
Okay. Let me ask a couple more questions, and then we can just cover all the bases. So I'm looking at the additional parking, and now we have a pretty steady traffic flow around this building. Will these businesses have a rear entry to the east, or is the main entrance to the west?
The main entrance will be to the west, and there's like a area, you know, back way out, is it, or a single door for each of these?
I mean, I'm just thinking about people parking and then having to navigate on foot to get to the front of the building while people are driving. And then the other question, is we've talked a lot about parking tonight. We've talked about cross easements. Has there been discussion with the, about a cross easement with the bank to accommodate any overflow that might occur? That's all my questions.
Good ones.
I think that may have been discussed earlier, and I think trying to contain the parking on this lot of record is the outcome primarily of that discussion.
That was mentioned at the Board of Adjustment case, that that was something that was contemplated. I don't know the result of that discussion, but that was mentioned by the developer. Also, the developer's also a property owner to an adjacent chatty corner property. And that is yet to be developed as well. Would there be additional parking there or not? I don't know. Something they can share with us.
Did you want to help us with those questions while you're up there? Then we may have some more for you, please?
Yes, very good. So I'm Matthew Mulligan, thirty-four fifteen Stoneman in Dubuque, Iowa. I appreciate your efforts on this this evening. So three questions here. I'll walk through those. So trees on the north side, we have talked about that with the northern property owners. I would say it's not settled in stone in what it will be. I have, in fact, built a berm, so that does exist. I know there were some emails that went back and forth on trees and things like that. But, you know, the trees that were there originally, those were on my property, so they came down. I had shared with them. I'm happy to put trees up, and I expect to do that. Frankly, I want the division as well. I'm gonna be building residential to the north on the adjacent property that was just mentioned. So, yep, right there. So some trees will go up, probably evergreens, things of that nature. So that's number one. Rear entry, rear entry, they will not be public entry points on the rear. There will be doors on the rear, but traditionally, that's been for employees. So I have a building very similar to this with the rear entry as well. And it is just, it's just employee use only and garbage and stuff like that. So there are sidewalks around it, and that's where, yep, so that's where we'll see use there. Cross easements, so the biggest thing here that really I strive for is to park it right. You don't, we don't need to overpark for a variety of reasons. We don't need to create a ton of asphalt space for unnecessary reasons, so park it just right. We did talk to the church. There was some interest, at least on the front end. Really, once it got to elder conversations, that's kind of where it stopped. So we have been in conversations with the bank next door. So the bank is a partner in this project as well. So I suspect that if needed, once we determine who those tenants will be, we'll be having those conversations with staff to identify how many spots we need to get. Originally, this was, there was actually an insurance company that was gonna go in that building. And so hence the reason that it was parked as such. But that changed. So I think I talked about the three questions that came up. Again, I just want to highlight X-Golf coming in. This is an out-of-state organization that's looking to invest in Bettendorf, so I'm happy to see that. Obviously, I'm from out of town as well, looking to invest in Bettendorf, so I appreciate all of your services and everybody that's here today. It's been a very good experience. Why don't I stop there and see if I've addressed everything that, in fact, came up?
Answered my question.
I've got one while we've got you up there. Just looking at the site plan in the northeast corner. We got that. Can we pull that up, Greg? Yeah, could you just wave your little one hand over the northeast corner, right where we come around, right? Just a little further, right in there. So we've got two lanes coming up, and it looks like it narrows down quite a bit. My question ultimately is, do we have a queue issue with cars that would queue up for the drive-through right there, backing up and blocking rotation around the building, kind of right where that pinch point is with that island that comes out? It doesn't look like we've got two lanes. So if you've got four or five cars queued up to that window, would they be blocking your ability to rotate around the building?
So I don't know. I would have to analyze that particular situation right there. What I will say is the drive-through may, so these drive-throughs are always funny because it's dependent on the tenant that you wind up putting in there. Actually, the group that is considering units one and two, which are on the north side, they actually will not use a drive-through. And so I'm really hoping to get to at least an initial consensus on that, so I can make a good decision on whether or not I put it in or not. I will analyze that. What I typically design for is a fourteen-car queue, so I will analyze that. That's a good question. I'll analyze that with staff as well.
If it's Atomic Coffee, which is a local coffee with queues down the block and around the corner and somewhere in a Davenport, it's an issue. If it's a dry cleaner that has, you know, five cars a day, it's a non-issue. But to me, it's just where you're going. It's all dependent on your tenant and your volume. If you've got a high-volume drive-through and rotation, and then you throw in a little snow and other things, and forty-two-foot, you know, SUV backing out there. Anyway, that was my observation.
That's fair. The tenant looking at it is pizza in nature, so atomic pizza, maybe, but not atomic coffee.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Any others?
I do have a question. So the sidewalk that is shown around, especially on the backside, you did mention that they were mostly for the staff, and they would be using the back door. But in an event that someone, some customer parks down there, looks like the sidewalk is disconnected to the front somewhat. Maybe that's what I'm seeing on the drawing, but in the southwest corner, it doesn't quite connect. So is that something that can be adjusted?
On the southwest?
So, yeah, where the hash mark, Greg, of the patio is, if you could zoom in.
I see what you're saying. Okay, that's fair. Thank you. I'll take a look at that. Thank you.
It's just there. Is the patio in the south end of the building?
It is. Yeah. So the patio is, so you were just talking about a three-hundred-and-fifty square foot patio. This one's quite a bit smaller. It's about two-hundred-ish. So it's gonna be like four, four-top tables.
Would there be any kind of buffer or screening between that and the drive-through? Or the drive-around?
There'll be a railing, yeah.
A railing?
Yeah.
So to your point, then, they'd have to step off the sidewalk, get onto the pavement, and step back on.
Well, unless, he hasn't said the patio's gated. To me, I could just walk into the patio.
And around.
But if the white space that is shown is landscaped, then that's the connection.
Yeah, that question's correct. But I don't know that the intent is the patio's actually gated on both ends. We don't require that. Just, people think because there's outdoor alcohol service, there's a, you know, gates on all four sides. We actually don't require that. It's not something that's actually done.
Also, Mr. Chairman, if you look at this dimension here, the drive is twenty-one and a half feet wide, right here. So that there could be potentially some accommodation in there, but there is a significant width.
Yeah, and I just, when I'm looking at the one, and I see the eighteen-point-three-eight a little north of that, Greg, and that going out to that spot, and then from that end of that space to the west, go west.
Yeah, this right here is the parking width.
Yeah, but go, yeah, go to the end of the eighteen-point-three-eight, and is there then twenty-one and a half feet from there to that curving?
Going up, and then coming around, yeah. It goes up straight.
Well, yeah, there's twenty-one and a half there, but when you get, the island sticks out farther, and I think the, it looks like this.
It's straight up right here.
It's still twenty-one and a half.
It's right here, straight up.
What you're seeing is the delineation between the asphalt and the concrete curb and gutter. So where the outline for the So where the outline for the island gets a little thicker, that's still pavement.
It's still drivable pavement.
What they're actually showing is there's three lines. So it's the back curb, the front of curb, and then the base of the concrete.
And what's that square, 16 by 16? What is that?
Oh, I see.
That's the transformer.
Ah.
Yeah, electric car.
Oh, makes sense.
Wow. Okay, well, that addresses the one question. Any other one else with the commission? Oh, we've got Matt up there. All right, you're off for now. We got resident, I think, yes, sir?
My name is John Brunner. I reside at 2592 Middle Road, apartment 207 Vintage Cooperatives. Just as a note, the committee did, or the cooperative did approve the sale of the land to the developers for the extra parking. We would like to resolve the landscaping to the north, which I think he is committed to. But we'd also like a right turn sign at the exit, the northern exit to prevent people going on our private road. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, John. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Tammy Spidey. I also live at 2592 Middle Road, unit 121. And I want to say, we were here last week, but I want to say again, we're not opposed to this business. I still go to work every day, but most of my neighbors are retired and are avid golfers. So they're very excited to see what's going in. We really have a concern about that additional parking, really the traffic. And Johnson, right turn, I think we are really looking for a no right turn because traffic could exit out and likely will exit out. Many people use our private drive to go out of that area now because it's very congested when you try and turn out of Northwest Bank parking lot onto Middle Road, especially when I came down here today, I had to wait several minutes. So I think that is a concern. As John mentioned, we do have a signed purchase agreement that was executed today. The buyer has 45 days for due diligence and then 30 days to close. So we're not quite there, but we are confident that that will go through. And as John mentions, and we're very grateful, there has been a berm, dirt berm that's been constructed there on our property where those trees came down. But I, like John, would like to see that landscape plan so we understand what's going in there to kind of help buffer that. And again, if we could get that no right turn sign out of that parking lot, I think that would be a huge help because we are private drive. And if people overflow and park on both sides, such as what happens on any event, 4th of July in particular, emergency vehicles won't be able to get down our private drive to get back. And obviously, we are a 55 and better community. And so chances of needing something there in an emergency fashion are.
You're the only one that's 35 back there, huh?
So anyway, we're just concerned and we would like some assurances that we know what that landscape plan is and that we're willing to, they're willing to perhaps help us avoid traffic traveling on our private drive. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it, Tammy.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it clearly marked that that's a private drive and there's no through traffic?
It is very clearly marked. And also, the speed limit's only 10 miles an hour there. And we, we regularly see, I would like to say it's just high schoolers, but yesterday it was a school bus. And so lots of traffic comes and goes through that private drive. And so nice new concrete there, but when you get to Happy Joe Drive where it becomes city, there's going to need to be some attention there, which I assume they're waiting until after the rest of the construction happens. Because as Matt mentions, there, there is some additional residential construction that's going to be going on between our building and Northwest Bank, so.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Matt, any input on the turn sign or not?
Very quickly, a no right turn is fine. As has been mentioned, I do own the other lot too, which will be residential. So I, I think it's prudent.
Okay.
That's, that is there as well. So no issues from me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience or the commission? Last call? All right, back to the commission.
I would just add that if, if we're serious about the no right hand turn, then you need to make it so it doesn't, so you can't turn right. Or you've got to pop over a curb to turn right. I mean, if we're serious about that.
Give a little lip there or something to.
Usually, it's a right in, right out that we're constructing. This is kind of the opposite of that.
And for the, for the suites, the other solution is one that I'm sure nobody really wants, but speed bumps. That usually takes care of people coming that way if they've got to go over a few speed bumps.
Does make it difficult to plow snow, however.
Yes, it does. I'm not going to disagree with you on that.
The other side of the sword, yep. All right, back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 24-038, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 24-038, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 23, or 24-038 is recommended for approval. All right. I think that was it, wasn't it? Do we have a staff update?
We don't.
Wow. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.